Welcome to the Bloomfield Township Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for August 9th, 2022. As a brief introduction, the zoning board of appeals is a seven-member quasi-judicial body appointed by the Bloomfield Township Board of Trustees per the Michigan zoning and neighboring act. Matters pending before the zoning board of appeals are decided on a case-by-case basis. Any appeal of a decision made by the zoning board of appeals is subject to circuit court review. Each case will be called separately in order shown on tonight's agenda. There will be an opportunity for public comment at one point during each case. All persons wishing to comment will be asked to provide their name and address at the podium. Address your comments to the board and not the applicant or other members of the public. Given the number of appeals tonight, please make your comments brief. Comments made by the neighborhood association will be considered as part of the factual information presented to the board, but is not the determining factor for approval or denial. Please confine your comments to the specific requests before the board. For the request to be successful, an affirmative vote of at least four members present is required. We hope this provides a better understanding of what you can expect at tonight's meeting. And thank you, and now we will call our first case. But before we do that, we have some housekeeping items. First of all, we'd like to take attendance.
So noted.
We also would like to approve the minutes from our last board meeting on July 12th, 2020.
So moved.
Support.
Okay, I have a motion and support. Any discussion on the minutes?
I do not.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so the motion passes to approve the minutes. So we'll get started with our first case. And before I get to our first case, please note that we do have a postponed item. I believe that was item number three. Is that at 1255 Desiacs?
That's correct, yes.
Correct, so that is postponed to the September meeting. So if anyone's here for tonight, please know that that will be handled next month, at next month's meeting. All right, we're going to hear our first case. We have number one at 657 Lockridge Road. Is the applicant here? Okay, please step up to the podium and state your name, address, and a brief summary of your request.
Is it okay? Hi, good evening. Mordecai, Lev, 1657 Lockridge Road. Applying for a permit for a gazebo, 14-feet octagon structure, under 13-feet height, within the boundaries of the, of the house itself, does not protrude off the boundaries of the house itself, and then by definition is within the regulations that I'm familiar with. We've provided pictures, drawings that support the, the request, and that's pretty much it, straightforward, I hope.
Great, thank you for that succinct presentation. So any questions from the board? No? Okay. So I'll open the public hearing. Anyone like to speak about this item from the public? No takers? All right, so I'll bring it back to the board. Any other questions or discussion? Or a motion?
Think you can handle this, Carol?
Yeah. With respect to the request for a proposed pergola, I would move that the accessory structure be approved because the applicant has demonstrated compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards. The size, use, location of the structure is harmonious with the neighborhood and will not have a negative impact on the neighbors, and it will not cause any sort of danger to public safety. If the motion is approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to installation. I think that the gazebo is proposed to be located in the middle of those trees, and because of that, I'm not going to ask for additional evergreen plantings.
Support.
Okay, I have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, congratulations, your request is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Appreciate it.
Okay, we have item number two for 7388 Lindenmere Drive. 7338, sorry about that. It says 88 up there.
7338, yeah.
We'll, we'll get the correct address wrong.
It is, it's 7338.
7388.
7388.
What's on the screen is accurate.
Okay.
It is 88, okay.
Good thing you're here, thank you.
You were right.
All right, so state your name, address again, and summary of your request, please.
I'm Adrian Blackwell. I'm the resident at 7388 Lindenmere Drive. I'm requesting to move my shed from its current location, which was a temporary erection to the backyard, as my beautiful artwork has shown.
So you're just relocating it from its current location?
Yes, it was a temporally, temporarily set up over the spring to move stuff out of the garage while I did renovations inside the house.
Are there any questions from the board?
I just have a question. Is it going to be visible to any of your neighbors where you're going to locate it in the back?
The only neighbor that might see it is my neighbor to the rear. The white fencing around the little trees was something they erected, and just behind that is kind of hard to see, but they have an identical shed to what I currently have.
Okay.
And it's in a very heavily, like, secluded area where neither of us really go back.
Okay, sure, thanks.
Any other questions? And then I'd like to open up for the public hearing. Anyone like to speak to this request? Okay, then I'll bring it back to the board. Any other further discussion? I think everyone is good, it's pretty straightforward. Then, do I have a motion? Would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. In regard to the appeal at 7388 Lindenmere, I move to approve the accessory structure as submitted by the, in the application. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42.7 dash, or -7.6, because the size of the accessory structure is modest relative to neighborhood, compatible with the neighbors, and the location of the structure will not hinder or discourage adjacent use of property due to its relatively screened location. Should the, uh, motion be, um, supported, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, all permits must be obtained prior to construction, and it appears that additional evergreen screening on this one also is not required.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, congratulations, your request is approved.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, of course, again, we stated that item three has been postponed to next month. We'll move on to item number four. So that's 485 Eileen Drive. Is the applicant here? Thank you.
Hello?
Hello, please.
Skander Isary, 485 Eileen. I'm actually, I'm wanting to pretty much install a gazebo.
Okay, so I assume you're, you're located on, you have two front yards, is that the situation?
There's a circular drive, so yes, I guess there's a section of the front yard.
I have a secondary frontage there.
I don't know where you put it, you've got. Yeah, we're straight up there.
Yeah.
Okay, so it would be right here.
Okay.
To the left as you're facing the, the house.
So based on the layout of the lot, you don't have much of a backyard there, correct?
Uh, yeah, not a backyard, but on the sides, sure.
So really, I mean, no matter where you put it, technically, whether it's to the left of your house or the right of your house, it's going to have frontage on Eileen Drive. There's just nothing you can do about that, I mean.
Sure, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? Then I'll open it up for the public hearing. Anyone want to speak to this request? I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for further discussion or a motion.
With respect to the property located at 485 Eileen Drive, I would move to grant the permission request for the proposed pergola because the applicant has demonstrated compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards. The, the size of the pergola, the use of the pergola, and the location is appropriate for the neighborhood and will not have a negative impact on adjacent properties. In addition, I would move to approve the dimensional variance for the pergola to allow it to be located in the secondary front yard because the applicant has demonstrated a practical difficulty. The difficulty is established by virtue of the fact that there, there's frontage on two roads. In addition, it's a very odd-shaped lot, resulting in a lack of a backyard to use for any type of structures such as this or entertainment. The location will not negatively impact any of the neighbors, and I, and the, the practical difficulty is not self-created. If the motion is approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. I think because it, it is going to be a little visible, depending, I can't tell with the landscaping, it looks like there are some trees there, but I think I'm going to require some evergreen planting to provide some screening from, from the roads.
Not a problem.
Support.
Okay, I have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, congratulations.
Thank you.
Request is granted, you're welcome, have a good evening. Okay, item number five, 6475 Franklin Road. The applicant here?
Hello?
Hello?
Alex Ketti. I'm here on behalf on 6475, this is the client, Tracy Walker.
Hey, how y'all doing? So, um, basically, I wanted to put up a fence, simply because of who I am. Like, I just got off work, and it's just a lot of times where I'm away from my family. I have, I have a newborn, and I have an infant son. And so I've had people pull up in my driveway, and I filed a police report already, and so basically, I was told that I had to come to the board hearing and try to get approved. And so, basically, I, I didn't know that I couldn't put, uh, put up a fence, and so I went ahead and put up part of the fence, just for security reasons, because like I said, I had people coming inside my yard for whatever reason. And, yeah, so I, I wanted to put up a gate just so when I'm away, like, I have to travel to Indianapolis next week, and so when I'm away from home, I gotta, I just want to make sure that my family is okay, because I'd be gone for periods of time, like, next week I'd be gone for four days, so I occasionally travel, and so it's just a, a big issue for me.
Thank you. And, uh, so you have a portion of it already.
You just moved in there not too long ago.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, yeah, I watched while they rebuilt that whole house, they did a nice job on it.
Thank you so much. And so, and then also in the back, I have a huge truck, F-150, and I wanted to build a carport so I could fit it for the snow, and I was wanting to see if I can maybe get approved for it, just to cover up my driveway.
Yeah, we're looking for a number.
It's a tall truck, too.
So we have a number of things.
He does have a screen all around the property, and he is adding more evergreens all along the side.
Yeah.
He wanted all his privacy, so we are working on that as well.
And, and there is quite a bit of traffic at that corner as well, and I understand that.
You're also looking for a dog containment?
Right.
Yes.
In the front?
Yes, ma'am.
The dog is a pet, but also for security, right?
Yes, ma'am, for security, for sure.
And the coping lighting is, is shining down?
Down, correct.
And we're also looking for, did I see a gate? Okay, there's also a gate, correct? Okay.
So what we did, we lowered the lights as well, as you see, the columns are below the gate.
Right.
So, so they're not improving the height-wise.
I don't have any other questions.
Okay, any other questions?
I have a question. Do we have a dimension on how far that, the, the front fence is from the property line? I see some numbers from the road, but, um...
Yeah, more than that. It's more than, I think it's 32 feet all the way back.
From the roadway, okay.
Okay, all right.
On the drawing, it shows the edge of the driveway on Franklin, up to the gate to be 47 and a half feet.
Yeah, it's a pretty good distance from what I saw.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, well, I'd like to open the public hearing. Anyone like to speak to this request? Please state, step up to the podium, step up to the podium, please. And please share your name and address as well.
My name is Kelly DeLu, and we live just east of 6475, 4476 Maple. And the gate, the gate isn't up, but the fence around the property is very excellent, actually very nice. I'm proud to see that, you know, he's taking good care of the property. Yeah. And about 15 years ago, we were here, and you guys approved us with our gate, and let me tell you, it's been heaven sent. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Good evening.
Ryan Ritter, speaking on behalf of Wing Lake Association as the architectural chairperson, and a resident at 6800 Franklin Road, just down the street. We have some strict concern with regard to the fence and everything here. I think one of the issues that we're having is that we're asking an awful lot of forgiveness. This fence has already been installed and has been installed for several months now. The only reason that construction was halted on this property was because the association made a complaint to the township with regard to the extent of work and some of the things that are going on here. Our deed restrictions and local ordinances do not allow fences in the front yard. Now, this is a corner piece of property, and I know that the setback on the side of the property here, on the Maple Road side, has an additional requirement as far as the setback is, is concerned with the fence. We do have some photographs here, and we can also go through some of the imaging that was presented by the applicant, and which would help address our concerns. No, no, that's quite all right. It is felt that had the applicant come to us and the zoning board originally, we could have headed off many of these problems, and we wouldn't be having the same discussion here today. Yes, I will when, as we move along here. Thank you. There has been extensive remodeling done to the home, and it has been verified that none of these items have been permitted. You can tell by the roof structure, new penetrations that have gone through it and things along that line, that the interior has been remodeled. You know, that, that's an issue for the township to take care of. There was a loggia that was added to the south side of the property.
Yes, sir.
Which was never verified, it was never approved, it was never permitted.
We want to, sir, thank you, though. We want to stick to what, what we are covering tonight.
Yes, I'm just trying to, to, just to show Mr. Ketti's complete disregard for the ordinances and the deed restrictions that are set forth on the property, as he is still, to our understanding, the owner of the property.
Once again, the chairwoman has asked that you limit your.
Yes.
Presentation to what is before us.
So we want to, you know, first go through, and, and really, the biggest thing is, is that nothing here has been permitted. We're asking an awful lot of forgiveness. Again, there, the deed restrictions do not allow for gates, they do not allow for fences in the front yard. Two months ago, we had an applicant that was here in front of us on Franklin Road that wanted to put a fence in their front yard, and it was denied. There is no other home in this community that has that fence in that front yard, where that whole property is surrounded. With regard to the dog run, there is a secondary dog run on the property, and that goes back to the loggia that was added to the side of the property, where we can see. From this photograph, that was the loggia that was added to the south side of the property. And i-if you look carefully, you can see that there's a fence going all the way around it. So that could exist as the dog run and is in compliance with zoning ordinances. With regard to, um, other issues here, we don't feel that this application is complete because they have not addressed the shed at the rear of the property. While it is shown on their site plan, it was never approved, and it was never applied for, and that is, um, requires zoning approval, no matter the location of it.
Well, that's not before us this evening, I don't believe, so we'll stick to...
Okay, we'll stick to that, but it, you know, just goes to show. So then we can talk about this carport. There's, uh, I understand, because of Mr. Walker's statement, that he drives a large truck, which is an F-150. I drive a larger truck, it's an F-250. And I do understand that they have some difficulties fitting in the garages. The height, and, and given the height, I don't need, if, if this thing were knocked down, if you look at the elevations, if it were knocked down, that F-150 would still fit under there very, very comfortably, as well as my 250, and could be within the height compliance. It's also, you know, a concern that this is not necessarily an accessory structure, it's part of the main structure, as it's now being tied together through the entire roof system. And it would be very easy, based on this size, to turn that thing into a three-and-a-half car garage. So, you know, I think that we need to take a look at that as well, and I just don't understand the hardship. I don't think that the applicant has, there are, there are no underlying conditions on this property for all practical purposes, it's flat. They have taken away the circular drive. This, this property used to have an entrance off of Maple Road and Franklin Road. They have eliminated the circular drive. That would dramatically cut down on traffic being able to cut through. So as far as hardships are concerned, I just don't know that we have developed enough of an argument that we can apply all of these matters, just because Mr. Walker is an athlete. We can take a look here with the fence in the front yard. You can see that it is barely screened. That's from across the street, looking towards the front of the home. Here's the other half of the property, which you can see is barely screened from across the street. Here's directly from the corner. Highly, highly visible, all the way around the property. This fence in and of itself is a precedent-setting fence. There are no others in our community like it, and we don't want to start a position that this is okay. If Mr. Walker was truly concerned for his family, why did he move to the busiest intersection in our neighborhood? We have a lot of neighborhoods that provide different security. It goes to his hardship.
We need him to limit his comments to what's before us.
I'll, I'll limit that, but...
Yeah, I think...
We're, we're just, we're just trying to show that we don't feel that there's a true hardship here. This fence is not in compliance, and it's highly visible, and we as a community are strongly and strictly opposed to it.
Okay, thank you, so I think we got your points. Thank you. Okay.
Hi, Chris Fitzpatrick, I'm the president of the Wing Lake Farms Association that this house is in. I also live at 6690 Franklin Road. And, you know, while Brian brought up a lot of the points, this is, we have had a special board meeting because of this, because this is something as far as a lot of members in our association have, um, been displeased with, and for a lot of the reasons that Brian had said, but one of the things that, that, you know, that really has been a problem in our area, it's, you know, we're very thankful and very glad to be in a, in a good neighborhood such as Bloomfield Township and our association, and we've had a lot of recent home purchases where they've leveled the house and done quite a bit. And with this, they've done a great job redoing this house, but we feel that what they are asking for is items that if it would have gone through our, our association, we would not have approved, because of, you know, the setback requirements, the, the precedent that it sets for putting a fence and a gate in a yard, which we have none of those in a front yard in our association. We've also had a couple requests for that just recently, within the last couple months, to put a fence in the front yard, and that was not approved by the township. So while we, while we sympathize with the, with the Walkers about having a young child and, and safety, I live right on Franklin Road also, and I moved in there when my son was first born, and my other son was two, so I understand the, the, the safety factor, but we were able to make that happen without having to put up a fence. So what I would like to, you know, what I've got, and I'm sorry, I've got notes from our meeting, and basically what our, our, um, board has said, has said that, um, here are a couple items. Wing Lake Farms Homeowners Association was never approached about any of these non-approved topics, even through the local building or owner was aware of this requirement. Wing Lake Farm appreciates the city taking action to stop this dangerous precedent. Most of the answers to the ZBA application questionnaire are false and misleading, and all aspects of the proposed variances are not consistent with the neighborhood, surrounding properties, or vision of the homeowners' association, and the property would be perfectly functional without them. Practical difficulty cannot be justified on this, and that's all I got. Thank you.
Christina O'Harpalo.
Christina O'Harpalo, Wing Lake Farms, I live at 6660 Indianwood Trail, I also own 448 South Williamsbury. I've been, I am a past president, a board member, and I have been on the board for many years. What I'm opposed to is the fence in the front yard. I'm opposed to a carport or garage that goes outside of the deed restrictions. As, having been on the board for many years, many residents have come, have asked for variances, we have always been reasonable to work with a residence, to work around the issues that they have, and find solutions. In this case, we did not have the opportunity. Mr. DeLu is an example, he, they requested the gate on their property because they were getting turn-ins off of Maple Road, and we did work with them, and we did come up with a solution. So they do have that gate. I think that, on this particular property, taking away the Maple Road driveway was a smart thing to do. The driveway off of Franklin Road is after the light, as you're going north, so I think that that is potentially, I mean, I'm sorry to hear that you're getting drive-ins, because that's disturbing right there. I would not be opposed to considering a gate if the applicant worked with the neighborhood, and we could work through something. But the fence in the front yard, we do not, our deed restrictions clearly say no fence in the front yard. We have worked hard over the years to maintain and only allow fences that meet the restrictions, and that are suitable and within the guidelines of the neighborhood, and aesthetically, this one certainly is. The issue that I have is that it's on the front yard. So that's it. Thank you.
Wayne Castle, 5950 Indianwood Trail, also a board member, Wing Lake Farms, Inc. I think it's been stated pretty clearly, the opinion, the majority opinion of the board, as it reflects to this, this entire ZBA package. I just wanted to add, I mean, and I agree with, with everything that's been stated so far, I want to also add that, in my opinion, there's a safety element to this as well, but because of eliminating that Maple Road drive-through, any delivery trucks or, or cars that were to pull into there, they're basically going to have to back out onto Franklin Road now, which is, in my mind, dangerous. That's why most properties on the busiest streets of, of Maple or Franklin, you know, have a circle, a circular driveway, so that you can, you know, see the oncoming traffic. So that's a concern in, in my mind as well, from a safety perspective. And then, just to reiterate that, I mean, this fence and the accessory structures and things that, you, you can clearly see this from multiple houses away. I walk my dog, and my son and I run around this neighborhood, live just not, not too far from here, and you can see all of this construction from many houses away. And I know it takes time for, for screening to really grow in, it can take years, but the precedence is not worth it, in, in my opinion, and that we really need to, to start over and to consider something that would fit within the vision and the, and the, sorry, the, the association deed, deed restrictions, and the HOA, you know, vision. That's all.
Hi, my name is Tom Barnes, I live at 6400 Navajo Court. Definitely not supportive of the full fence around their perimeter. I'm not supportive of the shed structure in the back, you can see it, it's big. I'm not supportive of a large garage or carport structure. I don't like the gate there for the safety reasons, and I don't understand what Mr. Walker has to do with the whole thing. I mean, is this a rental house?
Please address your questions to the board.
Oh, is this a rental house? I'm asking you, Chairman.
You'll get an answer after.
Okay. Because I don't understand what, he has anything to do with it. I mean, he doesn't own the home, so I don't even know why he's talking, so. Okay, thank you.
My name is Michael Maddens, I'm a resident at 6720 Orinoco Circle, part of this subdivision and part of the board. My biggest concern is not necessarily the aesthetics, but, but frankly, just the blatant disregard for the, the current zoning rules, going ahead with things ahead of being approved. You know, we're happy to work with any member of our community to do something that keep, fits within up the parameters of our community that have been well-established, and I just have concerns that, again, we're breaking a ton of precedents here, that just has no reason to be done. And that, along with pretty much everything my neighbors have already voiced, I'd just like to be on board with that. I, I agree with what they've already said. Thank you.
I'm Roy Blanett, 5975 Franklin Road. Close to 50-year resident there. I do not support the fence, the gate, or the height of the carport. If it was a garage designed to go with the house, then I think things could be done much better, but, but the need for something that is 13-foot clearance from the end, I do not support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public like to speak?
Good evening, Board. Dan Devine at 4511 Lakeview Court. Hello to former colleagues, as I sat on this board for many years, and I appreciate the, the hard work that you do. I also want to commend the township staff for jumping on this right away when it came to their attention through a complaint by our architectural chair, that there was work being done without permits. Permits are not, I know sometimes they get a bad rap, but they're not just a revenue stream for the township. There's a reason why we permit properties, and it's for the health, safety, and welfare of, of the residents and the neighbors. So this gentleman who's presenting tonight, Mr. Keddie, he's actually listed as the owner in, at Oakland County and here at the township. So he's the one that's seeking the application. If you read the letter very clearly, it states that he's, he is the applicant, and Mr. Walker is a client, whatever that means, he doesn't call him the owner. So as we all know, being on the board, the variances run with the land. Once you grant the variance, that's it, forevermore. Mr. Walker, if he's renting there, if he's moved in, we don't know, what have you, but he could be a temporary resident there, and then we have, the neighborhood has to live with whatever we do. What's most egregious is that Mr. Keddie claims to be a licensed builder, but he actually is not. His company is a brick paving company, and he and his brother, who are a partner in the brick paving company, are the owners of this property.
Sir, can we get, are you, we wanted to address the items here.
Yes, so I'm just wanting, because I won't get a chance to explain this, and if they don't tell the truth, then I want to make sure I'm putting it out here, that we have concerns, because it looks like Mr. Walker's being used to present a face that isn't really, in reality, what's going on here at this location. So in any event, there is no item that's being presented here tonight that can be sustained on the factors for practical difficulty. There is nothing on the property that is unique or special, it's a 1.4-acre square. Anything could have been done or proposed. There's nothing unique or special about it, there's no hardship to whoever the owner is or will be down the road from enjoying the property without any variance whatsoever. So there, there's really no necessity for it, there's no practical difficulty as far as, this will be the only perimeter fence that I'm aware of in our part of town, around the entire area. The, it's not a safety fence. Even in my advanced age, I, I could jump that fence. It's a four-foot fence, and it's not for safety, it, it's an aesthetic, and, and we don't like that aesthetic in our, our neighborhood association. If enough people want to change the deed restrictions, we would do that. But there's really no need for the fencing. The, the dog run is a very interesting thing, I don't know that you've really honed in on it. If I may use the pointer. I think that the dog run, if I'm not mistaken, is this area here. And it, it's right up alongside Mr. DeLu's property and, and Maple Road. Why is the dog run not adjacent to the house? Why do I, as a walker that goes by on occasion down, there's no safety path there, but there are pedestrians and bikers and people that try to go by on Maple Road there, and the dog's going to be right, right there, on top of them. Now, again, he might have a very nice dog, I don't know, but doesn't mean the next owner's going to have nice dogs. Why can't it be tucked in behind the house, where no one will have to deal with the dogs? The other instance, as far as the, the piers and the, the gate in front, Mr. DeLu did go through the process 15 years ago, it was not a unanimous decision on this board, but he did show that there was a, a need at that time, and, but he went through the process, and it was negotiated, and, and the neighborhood association was ultimately in favor of it. In this instance, has been indicated, you're going to have people pulling in to the driveway here, and there's that, the, the fence, or the gate, they're going to have to back out onto Franklin. Now, there was substantial work done on that driveway, and I do believe it requires a road commission permit, because they were, it goes onto a road commission road. And that's my understanding, I looked it up at the road commission website, and, and you have to deal with them. On top of that is the fact that you'll have safety concerns that the road commission is going to be concerned with, about backing into traffic onto Franklin Road.
Yes.
Again, these things could have all been worked out, had it been presented to the homeowners' association, which is in the application package for the zoning board, the last page is a flow chart, and the first thing on the flow chart is contact the homeowners' association before you do anything further. And that was not done. So what we end up doing here tonight, and I know we used to hate it when I was on the board, we're doing staff work at the board table. And this is all stuff that could have been worked through, we, we love to have neighbors, new neighbors, but you got to follow the rules. And there are a lot of properties, they're waiting to see what happens here, to determine what they're going to do with their properties, a lot of new construction. So the carport, a carport, that's at, at an apartment complex. This is a single-family residential neighborhood, we have ordinances against open storage. That, that could be, not that this gentleman might be using it that, for that, but who knows, the next person down the road. And, and a carport is not a garage. Again, it's, it's, practical difficulty was not shown, because all of these things were self-created. The home that was purchased and remodeled had a garage, and it was a part of the, the home in the back here. And that's been eliminated, they eliminated that, I don't know why, but now you want a carport. No, it doesn't fly, it doesn't work that way. So the shed in the back, that'll have to be something that can be talked about later, but that is not a shed, that's like an entertainment area. It, it looks like it's got electrical and plumbing, again, no permitting. From what I was to understand, looking at the township's website, everything's been stopped at this property. The inspectors need to go in there and look at what's been done inside, exterior, and, and then, you know, make sure that everything's on the up and up. What I would respectfully request of this board is that the whole thing be denied, and let's get it back to square one, have whoever the owner of the property is come to the, the homeowners' association, like everybody else does, and work through that process, and then if, in fact, variances are required, or something that the homeowners' association would support, then we can come back here and we won't be doing staff work at the board table. This is not a precedent-setting board, I get that, but all the new people that are moving in, look at what happens on all these things, and this is Maple and Franklin. If, if this individual can do this, why can't everybody else? That's going to be the argument. And it's, it's like a signature thing. If someone's worried about their safety, maybe that's not the proper location to live. It's not that we want someone to move away, but I'm not aware
Yep.
...that it's a, a dangerous neighborhood. We just passed a new millage for, for an increase for police.
filibuster.
So, yes, sir.
Thank you.
And I would not be here tonight had it gone through the proper channels. So, again, I think we have to figure out who's the owner, why, if he's supposedly a builder, did he not get permits, and why reward someone for bad behavior?
That's not before us, Dan, and you know that. And you also, I'm sure everyone listened to the chair when she began the meeting, we do not make our decision based on your deed restrictions, okay? It's really great if people do go through the committees they're supposed to, if they're in an association, but we're not here to enforce your deed restrictions, we just will, don't stand up again.
No, I, I just want to say, the deed restriction, you're talking to me, and I'm just saying, Ms. Rosati...
I'm talking generally to the public, because I heard everybody stand up and talk about their deed restrictions.
It's not just the deed restrictions, it's the, it is the township ordinances that they have to...
We will be, we will be making a decision based on the township ordinances.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Do we hear anyone? Okay, we're going to close the public hearing. So the applicant would, please come back. So I'm sure you heard some of the discussion, I wonder if you want an opportunity to address any of the questions or concerns?
Definitely. I first off want to say, I am the owner. I guess on the application, it didn't say that, but it should have said that. And on top of that, first off, I want to apologize to all my neighbors. When I put up that gate, as soon as I did, I was thinking about the security of my family. And like I said, for me coming home to practice, and I have seen people driving in my, my driveway, and literally pulling up to my door and turning around, for me, that was a problem. So I, I just reacted fast, because I looked and see my neighbor had a gate, and so I tried to fit, basically, inside the scheme. I tried to stay inside the rules, and obviously, I still was wrong. And so that's when I got the complaint. Once I got the complaint, that's why I made sure I was here. I literally, you know, I'm not going to sit here and say that, everybody's going to understand my lifestyle, everybody's going to understand what I have to deal with, but at the end of the day, I feel like I need to be protected, and I feel like, of course, I did choose to live on this main road, but at the same time, I didn't expect people to just be pulling up in my driveway, I didn't expect people to be sitting outside my house. And, you know, for me, like I said, that's, that's a problem, simply because I'm gone for numerous times, and I leave my family, my wife, my sons, and, like I said, just imagine if you was in my shoes. I know one of my neighbors previously said he raised his son, but no offense, you're not a professional athlete, you're not a celebrity who people always want to come take pictures, want to, as soon as, I'm sorry, as soon as they find out where I live at, you know, it's been a problem. And I've, I've had numerous fans literally pull up in my driveway, and like I said, the only thing, and I've called the police, and the best thing they said was, put a gate up. And so now, that's why I'm here. I tried to make sure that, look, I'm not going to sit here and say I'm perfect at all. I'm human, and I, right now, the, the reason for the gate is, for the main part, for my family's safety. Carport, to be honest with you, carport, I wanted to buy RV, so that's why, and like I said, I just purchased this home, this is my first home, and I'm, as I'm learning, I'm growing as well, and so with that being said, I'm not going to sit here and try to suggest that I wasn't in a wrong in this situation, but I'm just thinking now, thinking about my family right now, and beyond those lines, as well as, like I said, my community, I'm sorry, I do apologize, it's things that I could have done better, it's things that I could have approached this better, but I didn't know, I, I literally went in this with blind, with a blind thought, just reacting because of the numerous incidences that I had with my family. So I do apologize to everybody, who, anybody that I've rubbed wrong, or whatever, I don't have no problem with y'all, I don't want to sit here and act like that, I'm better than y'all, I'm just thinking about my family right now, and so, being said, I hope that we can get approved, if not, you know, we'll come back and have to figure it out. But I thank y'all for listening to me and hearing my side of the story.
Sure. Can I ask a couple things?
Sure.
Did you have this house built?
No.
Okay. It, it was built... It was built, and you bought it after it was built?
Yes, ma'am.
When you bought it, it didn't have a driveway out to Maple anymore, did it?
It did. It always had that driveway.
Out to Maple?
Yes.
No, not, I mean-
Wait, oh, to Franklin.
Franklin.
But the one out to Maple had been removed before you bought the house, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I also have a question, just trying to understand, is there any garage on the house right now?
Yes, ma'am. It's in the, it's in the back of the house.
Okay, so it's like a two-car garage?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And the carport-
You can see where it goes around.
Just won't accommodate a big truck. I don't have any questions of the applicant, I just have some remarks I want to share with the panel.
Any other?
I'll let you wait. If anybody else has questions-
Any other questions for the applicant?
I have some remarks also.
I do have a question.
Go ahead.
If I understood correctly, there was an indication that there's additional screening that's intended?
Right.
You know, because we saw pictures where you could just see very clearly the gate, the house, all the structures. So the intention is that we're going to put up additional screening outside the fence?
Right.
So that you'll have your privacy and people won't see it, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. So, I meant, yes, sir, I'm sorry. So actually, it was a lot of dead trees when I bought the house. I guess it wasn't irrigation system set up. So literally, yeah, it was a lot of dead trees, and there was a lot of empty spaces. So what I did was, I removed the dead trees, and I'm actually planning on next month, literally, to fill them up with evergreens. I ordered them, and they're coming in, but it's taken two to six weeks, they said, because of the big order, COVID, whatever. But, yeah, I'm supposed to fill them all up with nothing but evergreen, so you're not even going to be able to see it in it. So, and thank y'all for hearing my side of the story. I know, yeah, it's been reckless today.
Any other questions, the board? Okay.
Thank you, sir.
I'll bring it back to-
Thank y'all so much. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you.
I have one thing to say, and this is probably really stupid, but I really don't even know who you are, okay? So I just want you to know, when I approach these things, I approach it based on the case and not who a person is. So I just, but anyway.
Obviously, she doesn't watch, she doesn't watch football, so.
Apparently not, so.
Thank y'all so much.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
No, no, stick around and hear the conversation, the discussion. Yeah, we'd like to-
So, have a seat, make yourself-
I've got, when, when most deed, when most deed restrictions were written, much of what we have today wasn't even thought of, let alone existed. There are also numerous sets of deed restrictions that have things in them that have been found to be unconstitutional. So hanging one's hat on deed restrictions is never something that I've always found to be a good defense. I would also observe that if the citizens of this community, and I'm a citizen of it myself, would stay off other people's property, we probably wouldn't have this issue. But as one who has a circular drive and am not a celebrity, I can assure you that having such, such a driveway is open invitation to anybody who just thinks it's kind of cute to do a turnaround and go the other way. The fact that somebody is a celebrity, it doesn't surprise me in the least that something needs to be done, and I would argue that that's the practical difficulty of this property. The practical difficulty is the citizens of the community and of the residents of other communities who think they have the right to drive onto somebody's property and trespass and perhaps create a unsafe, or at least the appearance of an unsafe environment for the resident. If we didn't have that, the need for a gate wouldn't exist, would it? But it does. And so that's one of the comments I want to make. I view the practical difficulty of this request human nature.
So I also have some thoughts on this. Well, I do actually think that this is a unique lot. It's because of really the two frontages and one of them being Maple. We see a lot of properties here looking for fences on a secondary frontage, especially when this is busy as this. And I'm in agreement that I think the practical difficulty of literal security could be managed by the gate in the front. There is another one in the area, and I think just even seeing that gate would stop people's human nature from thinking, "I'm free to just go in there." My thoughts on this is, the entire fence containment is, seems to be what is not, in keeping with the neighborhood and what's bothering a lot of people. I'm inclined to say, you know, probably the Maple Road one is good. Can it not return to the front of your house and not be in the Franklin front yard would be my question, so that it doesn't enclose the whole front, you know, returns to the house? Then you also have your gate out front that should stop, you know, human nature. And I'm also really wondering if the dog run shouldn't be more internal.
I don't have an issue with the carport.
No.
It's incorporated into the house.
It's like another garage, and it's part of the house, so.
And if it was turned into another garage, there's no ordinance against that, for sure.
Yeah, that would be my other question. Do you want to put full walls there and make it a garage?
And the other thing is, is that evergreen screening-
Of the fence, then?
Of the fence in its current location would resolve the issue of everybody seeing it. And, and again, I know many of the people who spoke weren't here at the beginning of the meeting, at which time they would have heard that this is not a precedent-setting body, so we'll repeat that again so that you're aware. Whatever somebody else might be contemplating based on what's decided here, there will be certainly other issues that will need to be taken into consideration. Everybody's situation is unique. At this point, however, I'm not certain that I know what direction I want to go with the motion, but I'm going to, I'm going to turn to our wise alternate to see if she has any thoughts. Go ahead. She chaired this thing for five years, so we rely on her.
My thoughts are, personally, I don't have an issue with it. I think it's a very nicely done fence. I think with the evergreen screening, it makes sense. I think those are two busy roads. It makes sense to me. That's just my perspective.
So the fence at the front setback would push it back, I mean, it's not permitted to be in a front yard, correct?
Well, there's two front yards, technically.
Right. I understand the need for the Maple one and think evergreen screening there is great. I'm wondering, you know, if the applicant wants to talk to the homeowners or whatever. For me, I would like to see the Franklin one pushed back to the front setback, even with screening.
Front setback?
What do you mean, the front setback?
I'm not sure I know what the front setback-
Well, on Franklin Road-
How far back does it need to be?
You mean to the front of the house?
No, from the property line to the front setback. What's our front setback? Thirty-five or forty feet?
Forty feet.
Forty feet from the property line?
Eight point thirty-eight feet, three inches.
So it's less than two feet off?
Well, that's the street line, not the lot line, but.
No, but the dimension, she's asking about the dimension. The plan that's been presented shows that there's thirty-eight feet, three inches from the lot, front lot line along Franklin to the proposed fence.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay. So if that's the lot line?
If it'd be in forty feet back, it's thirty-eight.
Right.
The other dimension, because it's a little off-centered, is twenty-nine feet, seven inches.
Right. Yeah.
It's not a big-
I thought the lot line is usually back low and just pressing it back, but.
The gate is set back from?
Gate's set back even further.
Yeah, the gate's set back. Hmm.
Oh, I see what you're saying about the fence.
If the fence's set back towards the gate, maybe it wouldn't-
So it only needs to go back like a foot and a half to be the proper-
Well, it appears to be more than a foot and a half.
From, yeah, from this.
If the, if the existing fencing was-
But then the screening's not going to be against the fencing.
Yeah, then the screening would, yeah, the existing screening would be, wouldn't work. I think, Carol, I think your solution might be the best, and that is extensive screening. And, you know, all the other stuff is, is, yeah, I don't have an issue with any of the other stuff. My turn. Going to make me do it. I don't watch football either. Madam Chair, with regard to the request for dimensional variance and the permission request at 6475 Franklin Road, I will deal with the permission request first. The permission request dealing with the carport, the piers, the gate, and the dog enclosure. I would move that the request be approved as submitted based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards. The location of the accessory structures will not hinder or discourage the adjacent use of property because of their location or the nature of the accessory structures. With regard to the dimensional variance, I would move that they also be approved as requested based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate all of the standards for practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because it actually discourages the right of the owner to the peaceful enjoyment of the property. There is no injustice to adjoining neighbors. In fact, this will be extensively screened and probably make, I take that back, will make the fence invisible and may even make the home itself invisible to the residents. Unique circumstances of the property have been given in that it has two front yards, no rear yard, and has, is on a very heavily traveled road, and is frequently trespassed by individuals looking to look at the property and perhaps gain access to the owner. Certainly, none of that is self-created. The location of the property itself is not something that is self-created. The fact that there's two front yards is not self-created, and the need for privacy from a community that will not grant it is certainly not self-created either. Now, with that having been said, I am going to require extensive evergreen screening around the perimeter of the fence on the exterior, and there will be a need for a hold harmless statement submitted to the township. An application for all permits must be made within one year and all permits obtained prior to construction and permits within five days for those things that have been done already.
At this point, you're saying, within one year?
Within one year, okay. That's fine. That's my motion.
Support.
Would we be willing to entertain a friendly amendment to the motion before it's voted on or no?
Depends on what it is.
I was, I was thinking about the dog run. Maybe we could just move it back into the interior of the lot and away-
The fence is already thirty feet from the road plus-
And it's going to be screened.
And it's going to be fully screened. So, I mean-
But if we're being, doing friendly amendments, I would like to add, because I think the screening is going to be critical, that there is irrigation to, supplied to those, those areas to, if you really add that to it.
Well, the obligation, the obligation of the property owner to maintain the screening is, goes without saying.
But they did die because there wasn't water. I mean, they weren't planted that long, yeah.
I would, do you leave? I would suggest that if, oh, there you are, my apologies. I wasn't standing up. If you're going to plant them, you want to make sure they get watered. And that's my motion.
Yeah, and I support it.
Okay, we have a motion and support. Any further discussion? Any further?
I'm just going to say, I'm going to support it as well, given that that front yard fence that you're discussing is actually the next neighbor's side yard, so they could have a fence there pretty much in that same location, and that makes me support the motion.
Okay, so I have motion and support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I think the ayes have it. Don't you request it?
Okay, I want to say something to you, okay? So if you do anything, again, please go to your association. But more importantly, you have to understand, we have a lot of ordinances that may be unique to other communities, so before you do anything in your yard or to your house, please come into the township and check to see if you need approval to do it, okay? Okay.
Welcome to the neighborhood.
And I'm sorry I didn't know who you were, but.
That's actually even better.
But it says he's more, he's more than an athlete, it says.
Sir, I met Pamela Anderson and didn't have a clue who she was.
Now, that one you couldn't miss, I don't think, but.
She was with Kid Rock, I didn't know who he was either.
But we know who Bob is.
But we know who Bob is.
That's right.
Because I didn't know who Rock was at all either.
Okay, we have our next applicant, number six, at 7200 Parker's Drive. Are you the applicant? Okay.
Good evening. I'm Richard Ziski, and I'm the architect, Mr. Chris Boucher, who is right behind me. So what I'd like to do is address the comments that the board sent out. And number one, I'd like to say that in the listing, it is listed as Lot 73. That's incorrect, it is actually Lot 63, just to make sure that that doesn't create any issues.
Okay.
First off was the size of the, or the height of the cabana building, and I misread the ordinance. The way I interpreted the ordinance from the definitions for height was fourteen feet to the midpoint, but I was corrected by the planning department that it's fourteen feet to the ridge. I might just say that that might be something to clarify in the ordinance for the future, but anyway, no problem, we will agree to drop the height of the building to below fourteen feet. Secondly, I'd like to address the area, that we are over area, and again, I calculated, I included the garages in my calculation, which I understand cannot be used, so I want to use just the square footage of the main floor of the house, and I take fifty percent of that, we are over. And so we agree to remove the pergola, and that would leave us just forty-seven square feet over the maximum. We would like to ask for a variance of forty-seven square feet be granted. Then it's to the last area, which is the location of the pool equipment. Mr. Boucher would like to speak about that.
Good evening. Again, Chris Boucher, homeowner at 7200 Parker's Drive. So when we were contemplating the pool and the mechanical equipment, we did get strong consideration to putting it adjacent to the home, based on what exists today, the garage to the west, activity in the back. There's opportunity on the eastern side of the house, but there's a large tree there. So there was a problem and one concern. The problem was, when we talked to the pool technician, they said that in order to create the channel on that side of the house, that it would likely compromise the tree. So that was the problem. The concern was, for me, was the acoustics, also just having that mechanical equipment, the heating system, the filtration system right next to the home, that was a concern to me and the neighbor. So understanding that we were going to put up the pool cabana, we thought, why not just put it right behind the cabana? It's not going to be visible to any of the neighbors, and then it will dampen the acoustics. It's a win for everybody, and then the tree, there's no concern there either. So that was the consideration.
I was just informed that the pergola is not considered part of the-
Right.
The calculation, so I would like to say we'd like to keep that.
You never mind.
Okay. So if you've got any questions, I'd like to answer them.
So we gave you a gift. Any question from the board? All right, I'd like to open the public hearing. Any comments from the public? If they'd like to speak to this item? Okay, well, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for any further questions or discussion, or even a motion. questions or discussion, or even a motion.
Okay, I am gonna make a motion. Um, I'll put mo, both motions together. Um, I'll do the permission request first. Um, a motion to approve the, um, permission request for the, what was cabana, um, at 7200 Parkhurst. Um, uh, in regards to it, um, I move the request we were promote, approved as submitted with the caveat that the ridge will be lowered to the fourteen-foot height. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42 points dash seven point six because the, um, use the accessory structure is appropriate to, um, what is commonly happening in our neighborhoods. Uh, the location of the structure will not hinder or discourage they, uh, adjacent property usage and, um, will be harmonious with the neighborhood and, um, with the, um, existing house. With regard to the dimensional variance, I also move approval, um, for the additional forty-seven square feet that, um, it is over the fifty percent of the main house. Again, um, with this lot size, I think that's not, um, a large overage for the, um, balance of the buildings, and would also approve the, um, to include the pergola. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because the, um, needs of these sort of accessory structures have been increasing, and, um, there's, uh, no injustice to the adjoining neighbors. I would also move that the dimensional variance for the pool equipment be approved where it's located. Again, being close to the house is, it's sort of one idea, but I think it will be tucked in well behind the, um, the pool shed. Evergreen screening will be needed, at least for the pool equipment, for its height and the other two sides of the pool house, and, um, should, um, this motion be approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. Uh, there's a note here about the single, uh, family affidavit. It'll also have to be filed that, um, you know, it's not for additional dwelling. Support.
We have a motion in support. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you.
And we have our next applicant. 1180 Lennox Road.
Hello, everyone. Um, good evening. My name is John Abra with Abra Zion Group, uh, based in Farmington Hills, Michigan. I'm here with the owner, Mark Abbo.
Manar Abbo.
Manar Abbo. Uh, not related.
Two different Abs.
Similar, uh, last names. Um, so I'm here on behalf of the owner. Uh, he recently, uh, purchased the property a few years back and did a complete renovation, new construction of a fifty-five-hundred-square-foot, one-story ranch. Um, the owner here is seeking on a few items, uh, listed in the packet. Um, I believe none of the items here actually are required for any variance setbacks. Um, I know that association does require a twenty-foot setback, right, and the city actually has a, the township actually has a sixteen-foot setback, so he does go beyond the items for the basketball court, the, the pool itself has been installed, as well as the pool cabana. So, the pool cabana, again, heights, it all meets city requirements, association requirements, things like that. Um, uh. So, the cabana itself is gonna be made with the same high building materials of the, of the existing building structure that he's currently built for the home, is the, uh, stone. It is gonna have a rear wall that's, that's solid facing from the rear, or side yard setback, so that there's really, nobody can see into the, uh, cabana itself, so kind of privacy for the homeowner itself. And obviously, the two or three sides are gonna be open. I'm not sure if you guys have a floor plan of that, um, pool cabana. Uh, the pool cabana, it's only, I think, eleven-hundred square feet, so it does meet the requirement of the percentages compared to the, uh, home itself. Uh, as, and just reminded me that we are removing the, one of the last items here is the, uh, entry gates, uh, to the, to the driveway itself, so we have, we have removed that from the, uh, submittal for the application. So, Manar had mentioned to me that the, the decorative screening wall was originally proposed at eight feet. I think recently, we were notified by the association subdivision that they would prefer a five-foot wall. I think that's in their requirements, um, and then we, we, we adjusted that, um, item as well.
So, that will be five.
I'm not sure if you guys have existing photos of the property. Um, just shows you, so, well, Manar had, when they purchased the property, obviously, other than tearing down the home itself, and obviously tearing down the trees that need to be acquired for the actual existing, or the proposed driveway in the home itself, Manar has actually kept the perimeter trees itself on the property. Actually, he thought that that was a great element to the house, um, and these are, I think, believe, originally trees, so these are not something that are even twenty, thirty years old. So, they have a great height, they bloom quite a bit, and different types of, uh, trees as well. So, he did keep that as well. Um, again, you can notice in a couple pictures right there, he had to remove the trees that are gonna be, in the areas that are for the proposed pool, um, uh, which he's looking to propose, or looking to build soon, so. And that is it. I'm not sure if there's any of the questions. Um, we're here to answer them for you guys.
Any questions?
I have a couple of questions. Um, the sports court would not be illuminated, um, and I would like to see a design of the five-foot-high aluminum, illuminated piers.
Those are the front column gates?
Okay, so, well.
Those are gone.
Yeah.
Well, I, I saw it. Two five-foot-high gates located in the north driveway, I understood, to be gone.
And the piers.
Okay, and the, and the four piers are gone as well?
Those are.
Or, excuse me, the four, the four.
Those are the four column piers, correct.
Okay, so those are gone as well. Okay, then I misunderstood. My apologies.
And correct, no, no lighting on the basketball court at all. That's not, it's used for that purpose.
Any other questions? All right, I'll open it up, uh, for the public hearing. Anyone want to speak to this matter? Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, good evening. My name is Pierre Depour. I live at 1265 Robson, and I'm on the board of the Kentmore Neighborhood Association and a member of the Architectural Committee, and I just wanted to say that we had, um, agreements with the homeowner. We welcome him to the neighborhood, and, uh, he's been very cooperative in meeting our neighborhood restrictions, which are more stringent than the townships. Our side setbacks are twenty feet rather than sixteen, and he's met those. And we also appreciate the fact that he eliminated the gate, uh, the piers and the gate. Uh, we have a very open community. It's very natural and park-like, and we are hopeful that we can continue to, to keep it that way. Um, earlier, the committee said that you don't send precedents, but if anybody in the township now has a security issue, they will be able to, um, make a case that precedent's been set, that if there's a security issue, that, uh, a fence could be put in the front yard. Um.
That's not, that's not true.
That's not true.
Speaking about this issue?
Um, I'm just speaking about the meeting. It's, just seems to me like.
That's legally correct, so.
Yeah. That's fine.
Okay. But, uh, we do appreciate all the good work that you do, but, um, and we appreciate the cooperation of, of Mr. Abbo. Thank you.
I'm Dave Leonard. I live at 1190 Lennox, right next door. So, I live with Manar. He's worked very hard to be a good neighbor, and he wants to be a good neighbor, so he's pretty rep, pretty well-kept within our restrict, deed restrictions, and he's done a heck of a good job getting there during this trying time with the pandemic and all the other, no labor, no nothing, so, I want to compliment on that, and I think, whatever he's asking for now, I think he should get approved. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to this item? Well, I'll close the public hearing and, uh, bring it back to the board. Any further questions or discussion? Anyone like to make a motion?
All right, with regard to the property at 1180 Lennox, I would move to grant the permission request for the existing shed, proposed cabana, non-illuminated sports court, and la, and five-foot-tall landscape wall, because the applicant has demonstrated compliance with Section 42-dash-7 standards. All of those things are, are appropriately sized, the use and the location are compatible with the neighborhood and will not negatively impact any of the adjoining properties. I would also move to grant the dimensional variances for the pool equipment not immediately adjacent to the residential home, and for the five-foot wall located in the side yard because the applicant has demonstrated practical difficulty. The prop, the prop, it, the practical difficulty is established by virtue of the fact that there is a, a rather large lot, which allows for these, uh, uses to be made. Um, it, the, they will all be set back significantly from the road. There's no injustice to the neighboring properties because, uh, the pool equipment will be screened, as well as some screening will be located along the wall. There are unique circumstances related to the property in terms of it being redeveloped and the existing trees all around the site that have been preserved, um, and this is not self-created. If this is approved, the application for all necessary permits must be made within five business days for the existing shed. Application for all other permits must be made within one year and prior to any construction, and again, the sports court is to remain non-illuminated. Support.
Okay, motion in support. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, congratulations. Your request is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have item number eight. It's 1765 Heron Ridge Drive. Hello?
Good evening. Uh, Matt Mosher, representing the homeowners at 1765 Heron Ridge. Um, this is a project, uh, in a nice subdivision that we have designed, a pool area and associated patios. It's, uh, unique in the fact that it's extremely steep. Over about a fifty-foot span, we have approximately a twenty-five-foot drop to the lake. Um, we're always trying to balance the aesthetic and quiet the design down so that, uh, it's not too, uh, blaring to anybody's eyes, so instead of having a ton of retaining walls, we think that the, um, the best aesthetic is to have a little bit taller pool wall. Uh, so, we are asking for a variance for a pool wall up to eight feet. Should be noted that most of the pool wall, I have evergreen screening, uh, or hedging designed in front of that pool wall, and the area that's exposed is a, a pretty waterfall, so, um, pretty minimal impact on the aesthetic. Um, we have some existing retaining walls along the east-west side of the property that, uh, are failing. They're wood. We're simply replacing those with a new stone retaining wall in the same exact place. And, uh, the last thing that I think is on the list, but it's no longer applicable, is the location of the pool equipment. It is gonna be against the house, which it shows here. I think it was noted that it wasn't gonna be, but that's, uh, no longer the case. So, happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board? Well, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone like to speak to this item? I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for any discussion or a motion.
I can make a motion for this one. With regard to the appeal at 1765 Heron Ridge, I move that the, uh, dimensional variances be approved as requested for the retaining walls exceeding four feet in height and the retaining wall exceeding two feet at the lot line. The, um, standards for practical difficulty have all been met here. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because of the topography of the, um, lot that we're dealing with. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbor by reason of the fact that there is going to be some screening, and the neighbors share this, uh, unusual topography. There are unique circumstances with the property have, have, they, excuse me, that have been demonstrated, again, given, uh, the topography of this and its location on the lake, and none of these reasons are self-created, and I will go on to say that all necessary permits have to be made within one year and should be obtained prior to construction. And then, you said that the pool equipment is gonna be adjacent to the house, so I don't know that we have to, um, have the additional evergreen screening.
Support.
I have a motion in support. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Your request is granted. Thank you. Next up, we have item number nine. Moving right along here. 1382 Ashover Drive. Hello?
Hi, my name's Delita Musawa. We just moved in. Uh, we would like to get a shed on the north side of the house.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Why can't you move it into your rear yard?
Because it's steep, all the way down, all, all the backyard, all the sides are steep. Only the side of the house is level, and there's a creek down there, and the water goes up.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Uh, is the shed gonna be visible?
Uh, we're gonna put evergreen in front of it.
Okay.
So, it won't show.
So, it won't be, okay.
Nobody will see it.
Any other questions? Open the public hearing. Does anybody want to speak to this item? I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for a discussion or a motion.
I can go ahead with the motion for, uh, the permission request at 1382 Ashover Drive. I move that it be approved as submitted based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-dash-seven-point-six because the accessory is, the accessory structure is compatible with the adjoining neighbors, and it will, uh, be fully screened, so is harmonious to the neighborhood. With regard to the dimensional variance for the shed located in the northerly side yard, I'm going to move that that be, um, also approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all the standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because of the, uh, topography in the backyard of the home making it, uh, difficult to place the shed. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors because, excuse me, the shed will be fully screened from view. There are unique circumstances with the property, given, again, the backyard topography, and none of these, um, problems are self-created. All necessary permits for this shed should be made within one year and should be obtained prior to construction of the shed, and you will have to plant evergreen screening around the shed, and it will have to be there twelve months out of the year.
Yes.
Support.
Okay, I have a motion in support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, congratulations.
Thank you.
And welcome. All right, and item number ten, uh, 4840 Dover Road.
Hi, my name's Don Nelson, 4840 Dover Road, and I'm seeking permission for a fire pit. Um, you can see the location. It'll look just like that one that was shown there. That's what we would like to, um, the issues are with visibility. This is the view from the back of the yard to the house itself, and you can see how the garage, uh, blocks the west side. Obviously, the house blocks the south side, and then the next pictures, um, are spruces and, uh, green giant arborvitus that we've already planted, eight, ten-to-twelve footers of the spruces and the, uh, similar green giants, and that's the area where the pit will go, the view to the south.
Any questions from the board? Oh, I'm sorry, were you, any questions? All right, I opened the public hearing. Anyone want to speak to this item? I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for any discussion or a motion.
If you will to make a motion.
Please.
Okay, uh, in regard to the appeal at 4840 Dover Road, um, for the proposed wood-burning fire pit, I move we, uh, request that it be approved as submitted based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because the fire pit will be a sufficient distance, uh, to limit fumes to neighbors and also by the natural screening that's being provided. Um, if this is approved, uh, application for all necessary permits.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, your request approved.
Thank you.
Mike Clintonholm here. On behalf of Jamal Owen for 1355 Club Drive, he's seeking approval for a new retaining wall to replace an old failing system as well as adding some new steps to get down to the lake shore and replacing a failed deck on the bottom, so.
Any questions from the board? Okay, then I'll open the public hearing. Anyone want to speak to this item? Close the public hearing. Bring it back to the board for either discussion or a motion.
Madam Chair, with regard to the request for dimensional variance at 1355 Club Drive, I would move that the dimensional variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant has demonstrated all the standards for practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because it would actually allow for systems that are currently failing to remain. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors with the replacement of these items. Unique circumstance of the property have been demonstrated. Again, we have failing systems on the property that need to be updated. Certainly, that is not self-created, and the need for access to the waterfront in a safe manner with the steps is certainly something that most anybody living on the property would want. With that having been said, application for, if this motion's approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to commencing construction.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in support. No further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Congratulations. Item number 12, 925 Ardmore Drive.
Good evening, I'm Kim Koval. My husband Greg Stynell and I are trying to replace a shed that was placed with a permit by the previous owner. It's an old Rubbermaid shed, and we're replacing it with a new one that will match the house. And it's a few feet bigger, which is why I believe we need the new permit. That's what my husband told me. He's out of town, so he's like, "You got to go." So here I am.
Okay, any questions from the board?
Where it's located, is it going to be visible?
It's directly behind our garage.
It's basically almost budding up, isn't it?
Yes, it's, it's, yes, it's right there.
All right.
Sure.
Any other questions? All right, open the public hearing. Anybody want to speak to this item? You guys don't look that excited. I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for any discussion or a motion.
So with regard to the appeal at 925 Ardmore Drive for the proposed shed, I move that it be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because the use of the accessory structure is appropriate to the neighborhood as it is becoming more and more common, and it will be screened from view to the neighborhood. All necessary permits must be made within one year and should be obtained prior to construction. And as I noted in my motion and will reiterate now, you should have evergreen screenings around the shed.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Support.
Okay, I have a motion in support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, your husband will be proud, you did great.
Yes.
Have a good evening. All right, next up, number 13, 895 Harersdale Road. Is the applicant here?
Interesting.
Yeah, it is.
Do you want to have a motion to move it to the end?
So moved.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion, support, to move it to the, do I have to say all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we'll move number 13 to the end. All right.
14.
Moving right along to item number 14, as I'm sorry. Thank you, yeah, you beat me up there. All right.
Good evening, my name is Tarek Drara, and I live in 2477 Harold Wood Drive. I'm seeking permission to build a gazebo in my backyard. The dimension is 14 by 16 by 12. That's going to be sheltered and screened by evergreen. This is a very popular item, this.
Any questions from the board? Okay, then I'll open the public hearing. Anyone want to speak to this item? And I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for a motion.
With respect to the property at 2477 Harold Wood Drive, I would move to grant the permission request for the proposed pergola because the applicant has demonstrated compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards. The size, use, and location of the structure are appropriate for the neighborhood and will not have any negative impact on adjacent properties and, and the, it will be not be objectable to nearby residents. I'm having a hard time talking tonight. Application for all necessary permits must be made within one year and all permits must be obtained prior to installation.
Support.
I have a motion in support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, congratulations.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for waiting all night.
Yes. All right, number, what are we at?
15?
15. 15. There's 14 up there, so I got confused. There we are.
How you doing? My name's Joseph Elward. I live at 2211 Devonshire Road. We are seeking to, we want to close in our yard. We want to add a fence on one side to enclose it and allow our dog. It's going to be, there's going to be a dog in the yard, and we would like to be within the 16-foot side setback. There are existing fences on two of the sides already. There's four properties that go along there, and actually, three of them already have dogs in it, and they're completely enclosed, and the dogs are free to roam within the whole area. So we're hoping to close ours in the same, and, I mean, if we had it within those setbacks, you know, I don't think it would look right, you know, to have another fence within the fences that are there, and there's some other reasons we really wouldn't like to do it. The side that we are closing it in on, our neighbor was nice enough to come in here. There's no existing fence here, but she, she has no problem with it, so. I guess that's it.
Any questions from the board? Yeah, open the public hearing. Anyone want to speak to this item? Okay, close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for either discussion or a motion.
Madam Chair, with regard to the permission request, the request for dimensional variance at 2212 Devonshire, I will address the permission request first and move that it be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant has demonstrated compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards. The use of the, excuse me, the location of the accessory structure will not hinder or discourage the adjacent use of property because of where it's located. And as it relates to the dimensional variance, I'm going to move that it also be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant has demonstrated all the standards for practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome, and in fact, it would create a rather unusual environment where you had fences within fences, and as a consequence, would actually degrade the value of the existing property and adjoining property. That also addresses the injustice to adjoining neighbors because obviously, that would not be the case with this being granted. Unique circumstance, the property have been demonstrated in that we do have a number of other fences currently in place, and again, a fence within a fence is, is just something that, from a value perspective, is, is just not acceptable. I have no other way to describe it. And this is certainly not an issue that is self-created. With that having been said, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, all permits must be obtained prior to installation. And I do not envision how this, I'm going to ask that this be screened in the areas that, where the fence is visible from Devonshire.
Okay.
Support.
I have a motion in support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Just a quick note, the, the address is wrong in here. So, just a, yeah.
What is the correct address?
That is the correct address.
Okay, all right, very good.
2211.
2211, my apologies, then my motion was incorrect.
Thank you. Have a good evening. All right, next up, number 16.
Yeah, guy across the street.
Have a good evening.
Variants for the gentleman across the street. Good evening, Terry Noson, 30600 Northwestern, Suite 400, Farmington Hills. I'm here on behalf of the owners, Karen and Howard Frasay, and because this is all about hardscape and pools, I'm going to let Matt Mosher, who's the designer, speak to the actual request.
Thanks, Terry. Matt Mosher, representing the homeowner, 2742 Turtle Bluff. Strikingly similar to my last request. This is a extremely unique lot in the fact that it, one, has two front yards. Second, the house sits almost 50 feet above the street below it, and therefore, there really is no rear yard, so obviously, we had to get quite creative to create a nice amenity for the client that's similar within the neighborhood. So we designed a pool area that would have the least amount of impact on any neighbors. The closest neighbor is, is down and to the east, and we have a strong letter of support from that neighbor. So therefore, that's why we did the pool. We're asking for a couple variances. One is some, some small encroachments into the side and front yard setback, under 30 square feet each. If this were a property that did have a true backyard, the encroachment in the front yard would be null and void, and it's pretty much the situation here. And then, same with the last case I brought up, is we have an extreme grade differential that is going to put the pool walls higher than four feet in some spots, and we're strong advocates, instead of building multiple retaining walls, to quiet it down with just a little taller pool wall and put vegetation in front of it. This did go in front of the Turtle Lake Association, and they did approve this as well. And with that being said, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board? All right, then I'll open the public hearing. Anybody want to speak to this item? No takers? Close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for either discussion or a motion.
I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve the dimensional variance at, at 2742 Turtle Bluff Live in regard to the appeal there. To approve the variance for retaining walls exceeding four feet in height and retaining wall exceeding two feet in height, pool equipment immediately adjacent to the residential, not immediately adjacent to the residential building, and the five-foot encroachment into the side yard setback. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all the standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome due mostly to the steeply sloping site and the narrow site that the homeowners are designing for. There's no injustice to the, nor to the adjoining neighbors by reason of them, they all having the similar condition and the sensitivity of the pool that has been designed for them. It is not, it is not self-created due to the unique circumstances of the lot. If the motion is approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year and all permits must be obtained prior to, prior to construction. The applicant did state that there would be evergreen planting along most of the taller wall, which is acceptable to me.
Second.
So I have a motion in support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you.
17, 2169 Telegraph, South Telegraph.
That looks so nice.
This is our last one.
Beautiful.
Dave, best for last.
Well, I'm stunned, this is not 11 o'clock.
Yes.
17, so.
I'll be before 9 o'clock.
Allied signs, 3365 Zero Giftos Drive, Clinton Township. Again, we're here for a dimensional variance on the size of the logo, which is a little beyond what the average percentage is in your, in your code. The sign itself meets the code per the, per the size of the frontage. So again, it's just a dimensional variance on the, the logo size itself.
Any questions from the board? All right. Any questions from the public? No, I'm just kidding. I'll bring it back to the, close the public hearing, let me say that officially, just in case. I'll bring it back to the board for either discussion or a motion.
Nobody wants to go home?
I know, come on, I'm trying to get before 9 o'clock.
With respect to the property located at 2169 Telegraph Road, I would move to grant the dimensional variance to allow a secondary signage and logo exceeding 5% of the sign area because the applicant has demonstrated practical difficulty. The practical difficulty is the location of this building setback so far from Telegraph Road that it, the additional signage is required for visibility, and it's not self-created. If this is approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year and all permits must be obtained prior to installation.
Support.
I have a motion in support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Congratulations. Item number 12, 925 Ardmore Drive. Good evening, I'm Kim Koval. My husband Greg Stynell and I are trying to replace a shed that was placed with a permit by the previous owner. It's an old Rubbermaid shed, and we're replacing it with a new one that will match the house, and it's a few feet bigger, which is why I believe we need the new permit. That's what my husband told me. He's out of town, so he's like, "You got to go." So here I am. Okay, any questions from the board?
Where, where it's located, is it going to be visible?
It's directly behind our garage.
It's basically almost budding up, isn't it?
Yes, it's, it's, yes, it's right there.
All right.
Any other questions? All right, open the public hearing. Anybody want to speak to this item? You guys don't look that excited. I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for any discussion or a motion.
So with regard to the appeal at 925 Ardmore Drive for the proposed shed, I move that it be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards. The use of the structure, the, the location of the accessory structure will not hinder or discourage the adjacent use of property because of its location. And as far as the dimensional variance is concerned, I would move that it also be approved as requested based on the information available. The applicant has demonstrated all of the standards for practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome and nearly impossible because of the dual frontage and the unusual configuration of the lot, of the lot and the location of the home. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors by reason of the location and the use. Unique circumstance of the property have been given because, again, of the home location and the dual frontages, neither of which is self-created. With that having been said, application for all necessary permits must be made within five business days for the existing dog enclosure, and that's it, ladies and gentlemen.
Support.
I have a motion in support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. So we wanna...we couldn't make a motion on that, or could we?
The details of it identify that's twenty feet off of Harsdale Road, it's ten feet off of Lone Pine, it's five feet off the rear yard, and eighteen feet off the north side. So it's not on the lot line, they're actually setback.
And they don't have much room in the back anyway because of their...
Yeah, that's the problem.
So...
Well, and yeah, with two front yards, it makes it difficult.
Yeah, I would think you wouldn't want to carry it over, you'll have enough next month.
You don't want to carry it over?
I wouldn't think so, but...
Alright, well, in that case...
It's up to you guys.
In that case, I'll open the public hearing first.
Okay.
I want to be official.
Alright, well, I open the public hearing. Anyone want to speak to it? Close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for a motion.
Madam Chair, with regard to the request for dimensional variance and the permission request at eight-ninety-five Harsdale Road, I'm gonna deal with the permission request first and move that it be approved as presented. The applicant has demonstrated compliance with Section forty-two-seven-point-six standards. The use of the structure, the location of the accessory structure will not hinder or discourage the adjacent use of property because of its location. And as far as the dimensional variance is concerned, I would move that it also be approved as requested based on the information available. The applicant has demonstrated all of the standards for practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome and nearly impossible because of the dual frontage and the unusual configuration of the lot and the location of the home. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors by reason of the location and the use. Unique circumstances of the property have been given because, again, of the home location and the dual frontages, neither of which is self-created. With that having been said, application for all necessary permits must be made within five business days for the existing dog enclosure. And that's it, ladies and gentlemen.
Support?
I have a motion in support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Approved.
May I adjourn?
Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
No, I think we should stay.
So moved.
Support.
In favor?
Aye.
Alright, opposed to keep moving?
Tracy Walker must be a...
Here we go.
Who is he? I don't know who he is.[618.82]